The following program is sponsored by the Greek Heelys Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Heely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Heely, Nevada. Heely City Council Meeting, June 25th, 2020.
While this meeting goes on, we'll be joining the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will be answering with the same intention.
Your Father, your Son, and your Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, as we come together for the liberation to this council, please send your Holy Spirit to inspire us to do the best we can for the people we serve. Will you send down an end to this virus and bring help to all our people? We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Do you want to have the roll call?
Jim Carson.
Present.
Thompson, Davis.
Present.
Thompson, Harrison.
Here.
Thompson, Spear.
Here.
Thompson, Almer.
Here.
Thompson, Future. Garrett, Lieutenant Thompson. Garrett, Lieutenant Truss. Garrett, Public Works, Rights, and Pre-Pract.
Here.
Police Chief Henry.
Here. Thank you. With that, we move on to item two, public comment. Please state your name for the record. You all have three minutes. Public comment? Can get to you.
A long way up first, but then we... Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item C6, you consider a home parking on the dockside at 100th and 11th Street. Need to have public hearing in the forest before you take that home parking off of public street. The school has an empty parking lot that could be used for outdoor parking without affecting the public right of way and the public's ability to park out on that road. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item number 10, the subject should be open to the public. The act is concerned that the city has paid approximately $90,000 in overtime. The cruiser staff does not know that these restrictions are suspended. If it hasn't been budgeted, you can't spend it. You need to hire an accountant with the actual degree required by the city code. Mr. Mayor, at your meeting dated June 11th, 2020, I reported that you told that the city paid approximately $16,000 for curbing that alongside the handicap junkyard. Once again, I'm asking, when the city council put that subject on the agenda? When is approved and by who? Lord, I remind you, NRS does not allow you to assist by the business which you apparently are doing. Mr. Mayor, I received a letter dated June 10th, 2020, in regards to the building of my property located at 49th High Street. Once again, I'm telling you, the staff does not know what they're doing. From the date of the first vote, which I received February 28th, 2018, I reported the errors. I have never had the water turned on, and I'm charged for water, sewer, outside water, capital improvement, and $746.65 for outside water capital improvement. There's no such thing. I was billed a total of $766.99, but property has never been used. I paid the line bill. I reported this on a monthly basis to the utility board of the city council since March of 2018. Get your Ds off my neck, Mr. Mayor. Somebody needs to address this. The city has the competent bridge of staff. You need to hire a deputy accountant to stop the discrimination. The only charge for the property should be landfill, which I paid with legal penalties. Even though the city has yet to reimburse me for overpayments on my other properties, I have credits coming, yet they're discriminating under color of law. My last billing dated May 31st, 2020, was for $1,233.37. How does that add up? How does that add up, Mayor? We go from zero, and I gave you a copy of the billing. I think that's a good presentation. I've given it to Mr. Carson, I've given it to the utility board, and now I'm at $1,200. Somebody better take their shoes off so they can count, build higher than ten. Mr. Mayor, I've asked you hundreds of times to give me an amount needed to get a permit to remove my property at 490th High Street. I told you I'm writing a check. I'm not building it. The building inspection needs to be removed. The selective enforcement regulations under color of law, that needs to stop. Mr. Mayor, I asked in passing last again, wasn't told that to date to the historical record. I've not gotten an answer. Mr. Mayor, on the new parking lot that the convention center is putting in, there's no PDA compliance minimum. There's no center walkway. Handicap people are pushed off into the road. There are lights within two blocks of the convention center. They've been out for six months to here. I reported a lot of that over a year ago. We're not setting our best foot forward in so-called crime area of this community. We need to address that.
Thanks, George. Three minutes is up.
Are you sure?
Yes.
It's not green time. I want some answers.
Thank you, George. Is there anybody on Zoom in there?
Are there any team participants that have public comments?
To Jim Almer, President of the City, he had a five-hour arguing about it. Mr. Mayor, council, I find Mr. Trachis' comment putting your knee on his neck very offensive and cannot be tolerated in this government of ours. Look what that comment has done to a poor individual and this country. I believe he's way out of line. Thank you.
Look what it's doing to our veteran.
George, any other public comment? Here we go. We'll move on to item three, mayor discussion for possible action. Approval of agenda, including removal of agenda items. It's kind of my intention to remove item C10. We'll be bringing that back at a later meeting. He just needed some time to get on that, to give the buying, if you mean, that would be right. Any other changes or items to report? Over to C10. C10 is getting voted in. Here we go. Call for emotion? So moved. Do I have a second? One second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Carry the so order with that, move to item four, city department reports. Fire chief. Do we have anything to report tonight from the fire chief?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I could on the fire chief's report, maybe we could sit in court and relay to him. I'd like to see more detail in the report besides six sheets of runs. I think we need to have a little more detail on what's going, how the operation of the theory is right now.
Just entire house?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Run the center?
Run the center. Evening.
Evening.
I didn't have a question about your report before you started. Jim?
Okay, chief, I'd like to, we don't have the report basically, but I'd like to see more detail in your report besides your, just your run listening. For example, operations of the, you know, kind of major events. There's any equipment building problems you had going on, changes in map car, and meetings, meeting with the county fire chief. Can we get more of a general idea other than the runs, you know, how the operation of your apartment's going? I can try to do that, it'll take a lot more time, but if you can give me that in an email on roughly what everybody wants. That is, if you want best, I'd do that for you.
Do you have anything in common to report you'd like to make mention of?
No, the fire, even doing it on fire, took a lot of resources, the fast fire or the one...
The one on the lawn?
Yes. It's, uh, it's up in the town of lawn. It was pretty scary getting it, it moved fast, and we had a lot of resources, interaction between county agencies and city and the Land and Forest Service and all the people that came out to help us. So it's kind of fast. We worked together, it's like I said, pretty fast, communication was kind of rough at the beginning, but there was a lot going on in the first, first hour of the fire, so it was big. We ended up with a couple of flat tires at the tire shop there, lawn opened up, changed the course, so I was able to come on, assist in the fire, so this is, it was big to see it really come out, we played together.
From all accounts, it was a big community effort, and we appreciate the word, "community" part. So with the town of lawn.
As far as the meetings with the county fire chief, that's, uh, that's settled. We communicate almost on a daily basis, our whole thing. So hopefully keep the updates, someone can, some things can say, some things can't, but I'll communicate that. As far as my report, I did run reports, I used to do a little more detail than we used to do. I have 600 calls a year, so, you know, we're tripping on that, so a little difficult to outwind some of the calls. To go through, but we do all of that, run around, not so well. With this new software, I am sure that it could be a bit more, come on, if it could ask for something specific that'll pull it out.
Is there any, has there been any discussion with the county fire chief about running the National Guard back for testing?
No, that was, uh, that was the county health. I wasn't talking about emergency management. County health had asked for assistance, and when, our county health went over and helped Lincoln County with their, uh, with their COVID testing, the National Guard is there, and says, "We can come help, Heely will come out and help you guys." Just ask for us, and that's how that passed out.
Anything else for the fire chief?
I got a couple of questions. What's the status on all your doors that the truck bay has, I understand have a problem. We had one that spring broke, and we had one that come out of the test one again. I, uh, I think it was a year ago that I paid to have, have them all adjusted, but they're just getting worn. The set screws for the springs, where you test springs and set, they've been used enough, but they're not staying set. We had some motor problems. Last time we had a motor problem, was able to purchase parts, but that style of lifted motor is, uh, old. The motor's no longer available, but we did get parts and repair it, but we have. But we've got a few, uh, this is the second door that we've had to fix against. And is it, and you did lose one man resigned? Yes, we did. Okay, right there, for example, there are two items that I feel, you don't need to have an email sent to you to report. The fire department, it's the building, and we had a loss in map car. To me, did you know, did you know, you know, I knew because I'm basically still at heart with the fire department. I don't think we need an email, we just need something, chief, real briefly. The trucks are getting old, the doors are going apart. I wonder if they get ice and that's, where's the ambulance? Well, the door won't go over down.
So Jim, all of the kind of items you want included in your...
Yeah, it's just a brief, I don't need the whole detail, you went out there and you went over, flipped over a Ford car. I understand all the reports, but the reports, unless you're a fireman, they don't even, they're hard to follow to start with. But I look at more day-to-day, I don't mean every day, giving you a report, what happened? Major components, that's what I'm looking for.
Maybe something a little bit more similar?
That's what everybody wants, or...
Yeah, I mean, is it...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's not what everybody wants, it's what the councilman wants.
Sure.
Sure, I mean, I, I asked everybody. Here we go. Asked everybody if, yeah, you should see, if you wanted to see, you know, let's see, I think it's, uh, let's see there.
This is Jim, right, you know, and I'm thinking, I'm thinking you're thinking something more in line with like what Mark Bassett does with the door rope, disposition of stuff, major events that happen, things like that.
Yeah, and it don't have to be day-by-day in-depth thing, but what sort of an upsetting event or, you know, or whatever, you know, I haven't, because the treasurer got a finger on the pulse of the money, and does she know that the door problem that time by mistake, contractor to fix them, you know, and are we going to have to plan budget? I don't know if it's in the budget, and he said a year ago we had door problems. I asked, is there something in the budget this year to restart replacing doors? Do I see in the budget? No. This is, we're not getting enough information. It might not just be this department, might be the water department, but we gotta do something different to make sure we're solvent and we're transparent on what's going on in our operation until we get a big surprise from the treasurer, so that we don't have the money for that. What do we do then? Put a curtain up? That's all I'm asking. I, I'll be darned if I don't have to send an email with a common operational, management decision to have something reported.
Understood. Thank you. Anything else for the fire chief?
No, just let you know, I did pay to have all the doors looked at, adjusted and everything. Right after that, I broke one, one spring on one door, and just recently broken another string on another door. I did try to curb that issue with the doors. I was not told I need to replace anything else on doors. They aren't getting, they've been there since 2006. I'm doing some diligence to maintain fire station and keep things up.
Sure.
I mean, it's, and you know, I, 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 you know, I probably need to report, but you don't know what I do. You know, there's all, all the things that I, I take care of, like, everybody, I, every, once a month, every Monday was the first month. I'm part of this school safety committee. I meet with them, uh, once, twice a month, so it's after five o'clock.
And having those other...
And I'm glad to see you do that, let's decide, yeah, I just, there's a lot to do, so I will try to do that, uh, the best I can. I've been trying to take vacation every day, and I've taken vacation the past two months, every day. I've probably spent hours at our station, just trying to keep up with personal moments. I have a lot on my mind, so if you listen, thank you. And I'll have the list, my staff that assists me, some of this.
I think that would be right. Any other questions for the fire chief? Thank you. Police chief? Um, sheriff, I did get an email about, it said, uh, truck traffic on Mill Street from a citizen that said you were copied on that, did you ever see that? They, they had a concern about semi-trucks using Mill Street as an alternate route. There is a sign on one end saying, "No truck traffic." Is this an issue you guys have noticed, or is it a thing that the sheriff's department ever stops for when they see trucks down there?
Yeah, definitely, because we, you know, that's why the volume is as big.
Sure.
So you have to be forward, that's a good point.
Okay, I'll be happy.
Is there a certain time where they just noticed a semi?
Um, it had started since they started working from home, and they live in the canyon, that they counted the number of trucks going down and curving. I'll forward the email, we can discuss that. Yes?
I know that a lot of the truckers, yes, still show.
Yeah, show that, yes, okay.
They're already starting on that code.
Right. Um, let's see, we got city, our municipal court judge, he's not here, but you have his report. City attorney? Oh, sure.
Judge Costa, are you online?
Thank you, yes, I am, I talk to her, I can do the phone.
Okay.
People and have people that are jaded, pissed, they're looking up and order a lot.
Okay, any questions for Judge Costa?
What did he say?
Judge Costa, could you repeat that? We just turned up the volume.
I heard what I'm going to say.
Could you repeat what you just said, Mike?
I'll repeat it, uh, we, uh, grew, um, made changes that are consistent with the government's orders a lot, not relative to now. And we need to telephone hearing.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, city attorney?
Danny Burford.
Thank you. City Bur?
I was contacted by the Department of Public Safety this morning. Um, they will be, um, taking possession of, occupying the honorary in April next year. Their budget is being cut, so there's no budget to pay utilities through August until next April. So they will pay their dollar to hold their lease, and they'll, they'll move in next year.
Okay. Uh, city treasurer? Nothing. City public work supervisor?
Nothing, I see that.
Any questions for Mike Prak?
Actually, uh, tonight, I have a, right, they have one of the questions, right, we got it.
Please, I have nothing, I'm like loser, thank you.
Oh, my God. What we did is, we got a email about the conditions out there at the city council. But it is that the wind just tore those same, our shelters, all the bits out there. So do you guys have to fix that today, or did you guys, did you...
Yeah, we did, we started, yeah.
We took care of that issue, okay. Then we had a, that was, oh, it's up here, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. City water operator, we have the report, city engineer? BJ, anything to report?
Now, which guy you question?
Questions for the city engineer? City building official? Who was in the report there?
Not today.
Okay, thank you, Brad. Uh, we move on to item five, report, city council, Michelle, we'll start with you.
Uh, no report.
Jim?
No report.
Ed?
Actually, I'm not sure the, uh, the...
Lexi?
Lexi, yeah, I think I, I was going to say. I don't think, and anyway, they're wanting us to do a five-year plan and be, uh, like, 14 to second up that some ideas will be need for emergency situations. And I think that's what I seen today in this file, that some wish lists are eight. You know, I don't think that the most qualified people to act and put that list together for the city would be like Jim, fire chief, or sheriff, you know, I saw on that board that they want a pretty condensed five-year plan and what we may need for, uh, walking copies, anything that could help us in different stuff. You know, according to you, that was pretty amazing, we didn't have one already.
Sure.
And that's all.
Okay, good. Perfect.
No report.
Karen?
Uh, yes, true, I'd like to report on, had a, uh, water board meeting with the county water group and whatnot. And looking over all the permits of Southern Nevada authority relinquished, that there are still many things missing. So therefore, that is not a positive goal found yet. They're maintaining on their ranches and looking at their water rights and some water actually having sucked about. But, and the other thing I have concerns about, I'm the newest along with the city of Healy to the planning commission, and as of yet, I have never been notified of a planning commission being, and when they take place, wherever they are, they're supposed to be at the library, I have no idea what time, what date. I went to the county and requested that information be forwarded to me, since they're controlling the planning commission. As of yet, I've received nothing.
Comes out of city hall.
We'll follow up on that. Anything else to report?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thanks, Karen. So for my report, you have my written report in there. The council will indulge me for a minute. While sitting through a Zoom meeting at city hall a few weeks ago, I decided to go through old city council minutes. Out of curiosity to see what was going on during the pandemic of 1918. In November 4th of 1918, and the council, I'm sure will find this timely, it said, "At this point in the meeting, a communication addressed to the city council by the musicians protective union was read stating that owing to the quarantine which had been established in the city, sixteen members of this union had been thrown out of employment who had no other means of earning a living, and that several of these men had families dependent on them for support. The communications, the communications suggested it would be possible to lift the ban on the places where these men were employed and allow them to return to work if an ordinance was passed compelling under suitable penalty to wearing of gauze masks by the general public. Considerable time was then given to a general discussion of the subject, which was participated in by members of the county board of health and a number of citizens present. City attorney Boardman advised that in his opinion it was beyond the power of the city council to compel the indiscriminate wearing of masks by the general public. After further discussion, the city attorney was asked by Mayor Witcher to prepare an ordinance covering the conduct of places of business in the city and compelling attendants and patrons thereof to wear gauze masks. I wish there was some follow-up to that to see how that went, but we don't have that. As many of you are aware, the governor's press release last night kind of took that decision away from the city, and on a state level, we decided that we would be mandated to wear masks in any public spaces, whether that be a private business or a public, uh, government entity. In discussions with the county health officer as well as Sheriff Henry, we will not be going around business to business to enforce this. We will be responding, however, to complaints as they are made to the city, whether that be to the sheriff's office or through the means in city hall where they filed a complaint. We will be following up on that. The government has abundantly clear that whether the city will be doing anything or not, the state regulatory agencies, federal regulatory agencies in the state such as OSHA will be taking this quite seriously and issuing, um, penalties and, and following up on this order. So I know it's inconvenient, um, speaking as a business owner, getting employees to comply with this is not as easy as, as it would seem that it should be, just as a private citizen, it is, um, a kind of a tax on our daily life to have to deal with this. And I, I don't, uh, I don't make light of that in the least. It is difficult, and I'm hoping that we can do the right thing for our community and certainly do things in the sense that we're recognizing that some of these businesses will face repercussions from entities outside of our community on this, whether or not they comply. So, um, that being the case, uh, coming 4th of July parade, which is not permitted by the city, but permitted, um, through the state, as it takes place on state right wing. The city is working with the Great Basin Service Club to encourage compliance of mask wearing and social distancing as needed and as advised, and we're just going to do the best we can, so. That being the case, I, we've also been in talks with Matt Walker, the CEO of William Eberi Hospital. If anybody is desiring a test for COVID-19, they can go down, they can get one, whether they have symptoms or not. Their insurance will be billed, but as I understand it from Matt Walker, there will be no, um, billing of the patient for anything's insurance doesn't pay. So same thing if they don't have insurance, that they will not be seeking payment on that. Myself and, um, my partner, Wenham, got checked during the, uh, National Guard testing. We tested negative, it was a pretty simple process. I think every negative test helps our situation with the state. We can keep showing negative tests, I think it's good news, so. Anyway, that's all I had for my report, any questions?
I actually don't think it else will affect, because if it did, they would exclude my county from wearing masks. You know, elevated on October 19th.
I think it certainly has to...
Our county should be recognized by itself. I really do.
And I, I don't disagree with you, Councilman Carson. We've been working with that elite committee, JJ Hupachi in particular, and most conference calls I've had with other mayors around the state, they all feel the same, are petitioning the state for that kind of leeway. And I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with them on that, but the state hasn't seemed fit to grant that unfortunately.
Can I ask attorney question? What, is it a true blue mandate, or is it a strong recommendation?
It is a mandate, probably. It's directed from the governor. His previous ones have stated strongly encouraged to the extent possible, things like that. This one he is mandating, and there are exceptions, such as people with respiratory issues, younger people, and it's not, uh, it's not appropriate for the job they're doing, but as it is written, it's a mandate.
If I may, would everybody like to have a special meeting and see if we can petition the state as well? Paperwork fired up?
Objection to a mandate, is what you're saying?
Correct.
I have no problem with that, because I personally feel it's a, it's an unenforceable thing. You know, you're gonna see, we're gonna see people walking, you know, with Sheriff Henry, with his troops, or, you know, hey, put your mask on. I mean, people are just out for a while, I just don't think they're gonna give it. I don't, I don't know how so many businesses that just barely opened up. They're getting people in there, they're serving dinners and drinks and everything, it's pretty hard to, to, uh, eat and so forth. And even the swimming pool, lava centers opened up, pretty hard to swim with a soggy mask on, you know. But, but you have to wear your mask in there, but when you swim, you don't have to have it.
Well, and I, I, once again, I don't disagree with you, Jim, but the, the way that the state has chosen to enforce this is not by having Sheriff Henry and deputy side people, it's to threaten the licenses and, um, permits of the businesses in the state. They are being mandated upon penalty of having either their contractor's license revoked or an OSHA penalty who penalizes the employee, not the business they can, incidentally. That it's... Incidentally, um, that it's, perhaps you've seen it, it says no shirt, no shoes, no mask, no service is what they're, they're bringing down there, and it is, it's by and large, quite a bit out of the state's hands. It's, it's also um,